Of these items. Okay, first item is the approval of the October 10 meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you much. Okay, first item, this is an item that we have seen before that went to the Preservation Commission. Kat Moody is here representing the... Is that you Kat with the cat ears? Yeah. Yeah, very good. We'll get to see us standing up too then, won't you? Okay, so George, would you lead us through this one?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just to save you future repercussions, it has been pointed out to me those are fox So you did see this request before you at your last meeting. It's a request for a comprehensive sign plan for one of our historic buildings downtown. It's a historic building, multi-tenanted building, multiple stories in the building. It has sort of a unique flavor and circumstances compared to some of the other comp sign plans you've seen, which are more campus oriented rather than building oriented. In this particular case, the proposal would allow for exterior signs on three sides. They're identified with the three different color notations bands. As part of the discussion you had last time, a great deal of time was spent on the front facade of the building and how much and where the signage would be on that facade. So I'm going to spend some extra time on that rather than overall plan. I want to point out something important to begin with. This was the drawing that was submitted to you as part of the packet, but as a result of some discussions, after the packet was put together and sent to you, plan was revised to reflect a smaller area specifically to identify the building. If you recall, there was a great deal of discussion about how much signage overall. Let me see if I can zoom out and catch them both on the same picture. So in the packet has now been replaced with this proposal. You can see it's a much smaller sign band. It really only allows for the building identification signs over the front entry doorways, which makes the most sense when you think about entry signs and building identification. One thing that was shown to you last time as part of the overall packet that wasn't necessarily part of the sign plan, but part of the building facade improvements were a series of stars that were to be put above the windows across the front of the building. That was something that's not signage. It's not part of the comprehensive sign plan, but it was part of the packet that went to the Preservation Commission for their review and approval. So that's lacking on this, but you will see stars out there once this is underway. So back to the proposal for the front facade of the building. One of the recommendations, or possibly several of the recommendations that came out of this commission's review last time were in relation to what the signs would show. Rather than naming individual businesses, it was suggested that products or uses may be a better way to advertise on the front of the building to attract customers in. That recommendation was adopted by the building owner, who has been very cooperative and worked with us very well on trying to accommodate suggestions from both this body and from the Preservation Commission. In this particular case, the signs would be limited to three locations across the front. If you recall, the original included nine locations, six potential locations across the building's lower level and then above the windows at the top. All of those have been reduced down to these three proposed locations plus the building identifier here. One of the other suggestions that came out of this body and discussion was the fact that instead of trying to put the business names on the front facade, put them on a directory similar to some of the other locations in town. These areas shown in green down here indicate locations for either directories or menu type signs so that customers at street level who are entering the building would know who's there and where they are in the building. So again, the building owner listened to your suggestions and took those into consideration with this revision. As we talked last time, there were a couple of locations at the rear of the building. So this is the north face of the building. Building identifier location, two customer business signs. So this is different than the front facade where there's a potential here for the name of a business. Currently, a portion of this space is occupied by Prescott Brewing Company's logo and name. It's possible that you would see a similar use on the other side for another business. These signs are visible basically only with southbound traffic on Monizuma. They're very limited facility. This is the most likely usable space for a customer sign and obviously, there's one already there for that reason. There was another discussion, considerable discussion about the west face above the building. So as you recall, there's a intervening building here and only this portion of the west face is visible above. Those locations are visible from Monizuma and eastbound Gurley. So the business, the building owner would like to keep a sign location up there. The proposal is to allow signs in either of those locations with a limitation of not more than 100 square feet and whatever shape seems appropriate. This seems to be something that would work and be visible. That sign would be visible on Monizuma northbound. It's far enough over that the large billboard with Dr. Iskari on it would not block the view of that sign. This one would be visible from eastbound Gurley Street and probably visible from southbound Monizuma.
George, is that a category sign or would that be a business name?
This is the proposal, so I believe what you're looking at would be a combination of uses rather than individual business names. There are a number of details within the table that was included with the application for you. Most of those details relate to the sign types. And as we talked last time, one of the reasons to have a comprehensive sign plan is to get uniformity in letter style, letter type, lighting style, and lighting types. And I think you'll see in that table that most of that has been accomplished. These exterior signs would have common letter type, font type, and size, and a lighting style. So these are backlighted letters. These potentially are backlighted or possibly gooseneck exterior lighting. Those are pretty common in the downtown on building facades. I think with that, I would be happy to answer any questions specifically. We do have Kat Moody from our Historic Preservation Office here to answer any questions about what happened at Preservation Commission. Should you have those? And of course, we have the business owner, the building owner here who may be able to answer any questions as well.
That billboard was on the left of that end of that building in the previous photos we had.
Those photos were taken from south to north. So those pictures were from this angle. And in fact, you can see past the billboard and see all of that area from those previous photos. So the billboard's in the same place. It's just the angle. Again, if you're northbound on Monizuma, you would be able to see past the billboard and see that area of the building.
Any questions for George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the update on that information. I'd never been to a meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission, so I went just to see this project because it is so important to the history of downtown and the architecture. And I was very impressed. That meeting was very well run. Kat Moody did a great job. She didn't have her ears on, so I think it was much easier. And there was a good give and take between the commission and the applicant, and I think the applicant needs to be complimented for his clear passion for doing a good job for downtown and preserving what's important. I think he should get some credit for that. And I think the changes that were made are good ones.
Mr. Chair, I compliment the applicant for making the changes that were made on this. On the front part, I can, you know, the signage is such that you can, for people on the square walking by, can see what is in the building. And in the back in the parking lot, that you can see what is in the building. I must admit, I have a great challenge with the side of the building. And my main concern with that is opening the door for other buildings downtown wanting to put advertising on the side of the building. Not just the front and not just the back, but now on the sides. And I have concern that that would start affecting the downtown area that we're so
So, Mr. Chairman, in relation to the signs on the building, we do have a few examples of that in the downtown, but they are few.
George, could you remind us how many square feet of signs they're asking for?
It's more, it's a little bit larger recommendation or request for signage than we would normally see based on strict sign code compliance. Again, one of the reasons for a comprehensive plan is to allow that. These locations could be up to 100 square feet. That's a 10 by 10.
Total what they're asking for in the building?
Um, I don't know if I have the total.
Because the next question's going to be how much is allowed?
They're basically allowed 70 square feet for the front of the building? 75 square feet for the front of the building? It's one for one based on the linear frontage of the building. And then the side of the building is roughly 150 feet deep, so it would be 150. So that would be the total for the whole building.
On the side of a building too?
Yes, if it has a facing towards a street.
And on the rear, the same issue?
Yes, sir. So he's not asking for much more than would be allowed. He's just reading them somewhat around the sides of the building to different areas.
Just wanted to clear up how much is being asked for compared to what our current code allows, that's all.
It's more of the placement locations and the type of signage.
Are you saying that the request is very similar to the maximum signage?
Just slightly over, but very close, yes.
When we did Firehouse Plaza, that was an example to where you could see all the sides?
That one had three sides visible, yes. And all of them were allowed signage, including the alley side.
Really see all the sides as you do on these.
That's correct. If you picture most of the buildings in the downtown, they're of similar height, so they block each other's side views. This is a little unusual in being able to see over a nearby building.
The St. Michael Hotel, does it have any signs on the north side of that building on the street? I mean, besides the one at the down where the bay?
The projecting sign is at an angle. It's visible from both directions, but I do not believe they have any additional for the St. Michael. There are a couple of smaller businesses that are...
Down below.
Down below, they have their signage just above their windows.
I have a similar concern to the commissioner sitting next to me, Don.
Which are what, having?
On the west side of the building having the two. I believe I said at our first meeting, I suggested, I think, one, which is closer to Gurley. And I still believe that should be the maximum allowed there.
When you're driving eastbound on Gurley, then you say, hey, there's gifts and there's something in, you know, otherwise you wouldn't have any signage that would be visible to know what's in that building.
Walking south on the sidewalk on Monizuma, you can see it. It looks just like this. Driving in a car, I didn't check that, so I don't know if a driver would even be aware of that going south in Monizuma.
I think the...
Because of the building in the foreground here.
The brewery sign at the front up here would be visible to eastbound traffic, vehicle traffic on Gurley Street. As far as traffic on Monizuma, this picture is taken from the sidewalk. The travel lane is immediately in front of you, southbound travel lane. So the signs would be visible, but in the summertime at least obscured by the street trees.
I'm not sure I like us saying what's visible to traffic because I want drivers be focusing on driving, not looking at advertising along there and watching for the trucks that are sitting in the parking lot saying, if you don't fit, don't park.
Yeah, we did have that discussion a bit at our last meeting. The purpose of signs are to distract drivers. Or pedestrians, but to distract them.
That was a quote.
It is a quote. Again, we do have the building owner. If you'd like to ask questions or discuss any of your concerns, he has been extremely cooperative, not just with commissioners, but also with staff in the various departments.
You know, one of the concerns I have is signs. I mean, I think we over-sign our properties. People think that a sign's going to bring people, a customer into the building. Typically doesn't. What do we do when the owner of the building on the corner of Monizuma and Gurley wants to put a big sign on the side of his building?
If the sign is something above and beyond what's allowed outright by the code, they would be before you.
He'd be allowed one square foot of sign for the length of that building, 150 feet.
Currently is under the building, under the current sign code.
I don't have a real problem. I appreciate the owner coming up with the categories, by the way, because otherwise you'll be changing signs every few weeks there. But beyond that, I think, I think we have to guard, everybody seems to want bigger and more signage. And I think we're, as a community, we're starting to get to the point that we need some better consistency. I worry like Don Michaelman and Mel, Commissioner Mel Rup, feel, the side of that building is bothering me because next week we'll have an application for the side of that other building. And I don't know how you, when I look at a picture, I'm comfortable with it. When I look at what can happen tomorrow from a neighbor or another applicant, I grow increasingly uncomfortable with it because the signs are just going to start competing. So I'd like to see if the applicant could speak. Is it a pretty strong need for you to have signs on that side of the building?
Good morning. Thank you again. I appreciate your comments on our efforts to make this tasteful, and it really is our intent.
For the public, could you state your name?
Yes, Craig Haney, owner of Bashford Courts. What I would say is, what I'm hearing is an overriding concern from our tenants because our building's a little unique in that we have 14 tenants in there. And many of these buildings have, you know, one tenant or two. And in the changing retail landscape, you know, it's definitely a struggle for these small tenants. We're, you know, we're trying to generate traffic and get people in the building. So I think we're a little bit unique from the perspective as we have a whole bunch of tenants in the space as opposed to one or two tenants in other buildings. I spend a bunch of time walking and driving the streets and I think that, you know, the one on the corner that says brewery is noticeable a little bit from eastbound Gurley, certainly from Whiskey Row as you're walking. The gift sign on the left is noticeable as you're walking or driving up Monizuma from southbound, more so a little bit farther south. So I'm certainly mindful of the need to keep this tasteful and precedence for future. I would only ask that you consider the fact that, you know, we have a whole bunch of tenants in one building, all desperately crying for help in terms of getting more foot traffic in the building. So I don't know, any other questions or...
So you're saying you need those signs?
Trust me, they're hammering me to do whatever we can.
They will hammer you until they get what they want, even after you give them something.
I get it.
I deal with it all the time.
And we've run real estate all over the western, yes, so I do understand that as well.
The tenants will always want bigger and more signs and brighter and taller. My only concern is that side of the building. I think the sign package, I'm so pleased with you going with the categories. I'm pleased with the signs that you removed. I think it's going to look more tasteful in our downtown area. I think as a community, we have to, we have to not be focused just on one property owner because other property owners will, somebody will probably print this in the paper, I don't know. And so other property owners may come up and want signage too. And I think that's what we, we have to guard the community, not guard it, but think about the community and the, and the look that we have overall in our community. And I think you might be starting a watershed issue here with the sides and three sides of a building. As a side note, I don't know how many of you know, but the former owner of that building just passed away this week, Cliff Petrowski.
Oh, he did.
He finally gave up his battle for, with cancer. It was a four-year, four or five-year battle. And we got noticed of it on Monday that Cliff had passed away at a really sad moment. He started something pretty cool here.
Great guy.
Anyway, those are my thoughts. I'm not for the side of the building at this point in time.
I guess my only other question would be whether we do, whether you allow a sign or two on the side of the building or not, does the code allow the building next door to come do a sign anyway? Does the code allow them to do that regardless?
The lower building on the corner would get signage.
And it would be harder to say no to them when you have two signs above them.
But if the code allows it, would they be allowed it anyway? I guess that's...
Yes. It would be a staff review as long as they keep it to within the code.
And you're coming in for a comprehensive site, sign package, which is not just one side of a building. They certainly could too for a comp, comp package. So I don't know. There's no simple answer. I appreciate what you're saying and I, I think everybody here's trying to get what you need because we want downtown to be successful. We certainly want that building to be successful. I don't think, my attitude, I don't know the basis of my colleagues' attitude, I just think we can start something and signs really become distracting. And I think it can take away from architectural and the community. So I just have trouble with that side. If you, if there was a way you could alter this package, but not trying to design your sign package.
It's allowed, right?
It's allowed.
It's allowed under our code, so...
It's allowed.
Not that size though.
We've reduced the size. That was an entire band across, that whole side of that building at one time, wasn't it?
The original proposal you saw was a band across the entire side, potentially for a larger sign or a whole series of signs and potentially for signs indicating the individual names of businesses. So the applicant has taken into account the concerns about that large area and reduced it to these two smaller areas and has removed the individual tenant.
Preservation Commission that was pretty much done.
I'm pleased that you've done that. I really, I'm not unpleased with any of what you're doing. I'm just saying I'm a little worried about the side of that building.
Mr. Chairman, could we hear from the Preservation Committee?
Thank you.
I mean, if you got dressed up for this, at least you should come to the microphone.
And give us a little bit about the lighting, this LED lighting that's going to change with the seasons or whatever, holiday events.
Thank you. I'm Kat Moody. I'm the Historic Preservation Specialist. I'm the city's liaison to the Prescott Preservation Commission. So to address the lighting first, George has up there the front facade. So along the top band underneath the world's oldest rodeo, which technically isn't a sign, but, you know, but below there, the, there's going to be LED halo lit stars that will wash the side of the building very subtly. So there's metal stars that will go in each of those facets along the front of the building. That actually extends across over into the Burmester Building because the front facade painting and lighting plan, which was approved by Preservation Commission, extends the entire facade of those two buildings. There's uplights planned for the flag, flags which you can see in that picture, those flag mounts. Those are subtle uplights that light the flag and provide some accent to the arc, those strong vertical art deco columns that make up the front of this building.
So that addresses Councilman Good's comments from last month?
Yes, it does, yeah. And then there's downlights below the horizontal awning on those same vertical facets. And then along the front of the horizontal awning is an LED strip light, which is a high-quality LED strip that actually ends up looking a lot more like neon than an LED strip. The building owner expressed an interest in getting lighting that could be changed in its color programmed depending on the season. So it's intended to be all one color, the entire strip, but say at Christmas time it could be red or green and in the fall it might be gold or, you know, something like that. So that's the lighting plan for the building. Paint and lighting schematic was approved by Preservation Commission last month. They approved a comprehensive sign plan that includes what you're looking at here, including the signage on the side of the building as it's represented here. Preservation Commission had an issue with the entire strip of the west side of this building as a sign. However, in the past, historically, there was a sign that encompassed the entire side of that building. When it was Bashford Burmester Company, their sign ran the entire length of the side of that building. And in regards to your concerns about the building down below that is sitting on the corner, if that building owner came in for signage on this west side of the building, it would go to Prescott Preservation Commission. If they were not asking for a comprehensive sign plan, you would never see it. It would just go to Preservation Commission. They would review the signage. If it met planning and zoning, signage, square footage allotments, and it made it through Preservation Commission for appropriateness for the downtown business or Courthouse Plaza District, then it would be approved and they could put signage on this west face of the building. And if you look around the plaza, you would note that almost every other building that is on the corner of the plaza has signage on both fronts of their building. You know, Bloom Tree Realty, the two bank buildings, even St. Michael's because of the tenants underneath, so.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Is there any further discussion before, any questions or anything? What about, what about the public? Should the public have an opportunity to weigh in on this? And I'd like to see, who's that knight back there, a nidus? Is that our development director, Graham Stotler? I told her I was going to get her up here, but when she get on camera, she told me she was going to hide from the cameras today, but...
Good job. She just looks so different.
Yeah.
A woman.
I don't know. Do you think Kat Moody or do you think Graham should get the costume award for P and Z there?
Don't put us in that spot. We're not capable of that decision.
Uh-oh, there's one of those stars.
One of the building stars. I guess you like that.
Okay, go ahead and make your motion.
I would just like to compliment all who have worked on this package because I think it's very, very comprehensive and very professional and I am very, very pleased.
It's been so long, I forgot what I asked.
Yeah. Your tab.
I move to recommend approval of SIG 19-004, a comprehensive sign plan for Bashford Courts.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Clarification, as, without any change to this elevation, just the way it's shown?
As I made the motion.
Okay, so everything.
All in favor, say aye. Deny? Okay, two, four to two, sign passes. Thank you very much. Okay, next item, comprehensive sign plan for the Prescott Self-Storage out at Center Point East Drive. I've been going by there and looking at those and it's quite a large area if you've been out to Center Point East and a lot of buildings. In fact, there's a lot of signage that's kind of coming on there already. Yeah, hi Tammy.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman, members of the Commission. Tammy Dewitt, Community Planner. Good to be before you, finally. Now I'm learning how to use this machine. Okay. Subjected property is located in Industrial Park. It is zoned industrial light. Currently, there is a self-storage facility being built on the property. This is about 2.33 acres. It's two parcels combined. And currently in an office, a caretaker's residence and 111 storage units is being constructed on the property. They are getting close to being, having some finals on some of those storage units. So this is a sign package for this facility. So this is a sign package for this facility. So this kind of shows you where the subject property is located in relation to 89A up here. The idea is to have some of the signage that's visible from 89A as well as over here off of Side Road. So this is a view from Side Road and Center Point. This is a proposed sign A, will be a non-illuminated wall-mounted sign, approximately 64 square feet. And the idea that it's going to be visible from this intersection here, so people who are driving on Side Road can see it, and where to go. Here it is on the side of the building. The building is approximately 24 feet long and 20 feet high. So in relation to the size of the building, it is compared, pretty comparable, but the sign code only allowed 24 square feet on the building. So that wouldn't be very visible from anywhere on, from the roads that anybody can see it. So this, compared to the size for the, what's allowed, that is pretty, a reasonable request Here's a view for the proposed sign B. It's a illuminated, internally illuminated, wall-mounted sign, approximately 140 square feet. The idea is that it'll be visible from the highway. Mostly since it's illuminated and people know there's a storage facility there that travel on 89A.
Question for you.
Sure.
For perspective, that's Empire's machineries, Caterpillar dealership there. I don't remember driving by there at night. Is that illuminated? It is? Okay.
Under the Land Development Code, they'd only be allowed a 15-square-foot building due to it's proximity to the road and the size of the building.
Excuse me, which, is that A, B, or C you're referring to?
This is sign B.
B, thank you. Which is 140 square feet, and typically they're allowed?
15 square feet. The Land Development Code.
Order of magnitude.
So this shows the different signs. So we have the sign A that's being proposed. It's non-illuminated, and that's located right here on the side of this building to be visible from Side Road and Center Point. Then we have sign B here, which is an internally illuminated sign, approximately 140 square feet, which is located right here on this location on the side, which will be visible from 89A. We also do have the proposed monument sign located at the entrance, but that's allowed by, by rights. That doesn't, asking for an increase in signage of that. So in regards to the size, it is pretty comparable. Appears to be a reasonable request, as staff's recommendation, but I am happy to answer any other questions, and the applicant is also here to answer any questions.
I have just one more question. Did you say that A is allowed 64 square feet, eight by eight initially?
Be allowed 24 square feet.
Twenty-four, six by four.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
The sign you're requesting is 64 square feet.
You do doo-doo, doo-doo, doo-doo.
Is there a commercial association out there that has any oversight or of any of their buildings? That is a planned area development, so to speak.
We think there is, but we didn't get any, any comments from anybody in regards to the proposed signage.
Were they notified about the proposed sign? The neighbors around there?
No, these are not, these are not posted or advertised.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, would you please put up the exhibit, the zoning map?
So here's the side road here, and then this is the access that comes around into the industrial park.
Right. The sign I want to speak about is B, as in boy, which is proposed to be located approximately here, and it's pretty much perpendicular to the freeway. There's vacant parcels here which are outlined on the map, which I'm assuming will have buildings on them also. The size of B is almost 10 times what's allowed by the code, and what seems to be, if I understand it right, the justification for it is that it says that this fronts on the freeway, which I don't agree with. It fronts on Center Point East.
Yes.
But it's a block away from the freeway, and I, for the reasons that I think Mr. Commissioner Mabarak enumerated in the previous application about signage, I don't see the justification for it. It sets a precedent for oversized commercialization of everything in there. And given its location, I, I can't justify a sign based on the fact that it's, that distance from the freeway. If everyone in there wanted to have a sign that could be read from the freeway, there's an old saying in the sign business, when everyone hollers, nobody gets heard. And you'd eventually, and it applies very good to signs. It's the same thing. And when you have a proliferation of oversized signs, I think almost 10 times exceeding the code is excessive. I scaled the letter size on that sign B, and based on those plans, it looks to be, the letter size is about five feet, two inches, which is a letter size from my feet up to here, which in this case, I don't believe is justified for all those reasons.
Well, when we did Center Point West, remember, the medical centers over there, we did allow some oversize, and it was because of the freeway and the speed at which you're moving that those letters were allowed to be. On the Center Point West, you know, medical campus over there.
That's correct. You know, Commissioner Marshall and I both live in the subdivision across the street from, from that Tri-City. And I have been fortunate enough to have gotten, gotten off of the Architectural Committee for my subdivision after three years. One of the larger complaints we had was that, that sign is lit at night. Even though it's across Past the Heights Church from us, and even though there's a freeway, the lights from that particular, that Tri-City Surgical Center has been the cause of several complaints from the subdivision. Not that that has anything to do with this, except signage is getting pretty prolific. We're seeing three, three and a half times the code allowance. If I, if my numbers are correct, you got 54 square feet of sign allowed, and we've got 180 square feet of sign requested. That's pretty, that's pretty, pretty large on top of the comments that some of us had on the prior case. I think we've got to be really careful here, guys. I think, I think we can start making the city look not as cohesive as we'd like it to. Three sign, I mean, if there's a sign for storage, that's great, but we've got three signs. They're pretty big, and there will be other applicants coming in for other signs, and I'm not sure how we don't keep a precedent. I mean, I don't, I don't know what to do here except say no, I think it's too big, and I'm, I'm sad to say that because my good friend Stefan Markov is the sign guy, but it's, it's just not attractive to me. It's just, it's way too big. And I don't know that businesses in the Center Point need to be attracted to, by the freeway. Most people in Prescott know where most things are in Prescott, and if you're looking for storage, and RV storage especially, it won't take much to Google it and find out the four spaces, four places or five places that have that kind of storage, so I have trouble with the signs anyway.
When, when we did the sign code, was there a discussion about having different standards for industrial areas versus, and, you know, I believe we have one, and that's why we have this body here, is to make the exceptions rather than have different codes for different types of zoning.
That was what was written into the code. So the Land Development Code says, "In unusual circumstances or unusual situations with the layout of property, the intention is to allow for the, the comprehensive sign plan request and have it debated and recommendation from you, and ultimately a determination by the city council to say yes or no to those things, taking into account the unusual circumstances of that particular site." Storage may be one of the few things, along with gas stations, that could in fact generate an impulse stop by a potential customer. Oh, I'm moving into Granitels Estate, I can see the sign that says storage, I need to store things, I'm going to go find that. It's a little different than a, a lot of other businesses where people know where they are, although technology will eventually real, eliminate the requirement for most signage like that.
And I think we have to remember, this is an industrial area, and this is more of a retail use. Most industrial areas are frequented by industrial customers. They're not necessarily frequented by the, the average consumer. This type of use is frequented by a consumer. But I don't know, I don't know that you want to make an industrial area look like a retail area and have the signs there for it.
This one is a little unusual. The original design of Center Point East allowed for a very broad spectrum from retail to office-based to industrial uses, so it's got a huge mix of potential types of uses. The intermixing of customer types is probably inevitable in here because of the types of uses that are presented.
I don't think there's a question. I think Center Point East and Center Point West are great additions to the city. I think they, along with the airport, will be the future of our community for employment. And I think we have to guard how we make that stuff look. And if we let every business in those places have a sign that would be visible from Highway 89A, let me tell you, if you have an RV that you want to park in that building, all you have to do is talk to the guys at the RV place, and they'll tell you where you can park the RVs. I don't know that the signs are going to bring people in. Yes, there are some impulsive signs. I don't know that gasoline would be one, but it might be. And mine, I don't pay attention to gasoline until the light flashes on my dashboard. So it's my, it's that little sign on my dashboard that gives my attention, so. I don't know, I just, I'm, I'm really anti-sign probably in the first place. I think we over-sign our stuff. I think we can junk up things. I'm not saying these are junky. They're not the most gorgeous signs, by the way. So I don't know, I'm, I'm not for this one at all.
Bill?
In the industry, in the sign industry, and I've been involved in comprehensive plans in other communities also, there are standards. And you probably recall when we reviewed the master plan for Yavapai County Medical Center, I asked the consultant there that did their signs, what he used is a standard for letter height for a certain distance of readability, and he said 30 feet of readability for every inch of letter height. And that's a standard regardless of how big the sign is or where you want to read it from. In this case, the five, 62-inch letter height by that standard would be readable from about 1,800 feet, which is way beyond the freeway. Now, I understand the, with commercial folks, if it's two or three times the standard that's really needed to be readable, then you're really going to catch them a mile down the road, that kind of thing. But I don't think it's justified here, and I totally agree with Ken about the precedent that this would set. And I've been in many master-planned industrial parks that people, that have gotten awards for design and all this. They have monument signs, and the letters are not designed to be read a mile down the freeway or a half a mile. I, I think that they're oversized, and the design itself is quite, it's not, it's very simple. Got large block letters. The medical center signs were very well done, and as you've seen them now out in the field, they're very nice, very tastefully designed, the letter style, the size was appropriate for the site. That's a very nice, something the community can be proud of. I think in industrial park, some people will, may write them off and say, well, it's just an industrial park. But a well-designed industrial park can make a community proud as well as any other use.
Could we get the sign, Morgan? Could you come up here and explain the rationale at which, were you given direction from, yeah, introduce yourself first?
Good morning. Stefan Markov, Morgan Sign 704 East Mall. I was approached by the client to submit a maximum signage of possibility for their property that's visible from the highway and also from Side Road. That was about six, seven months ago, and because of the frontage of the, of the buildings, which is almost 400 feet, I figured it would take a considerable square footage to put a sign there. And I did approach George about that time and presented him the idea for what's the maximum signage we can get, and this was the, the science that I submitted. And I didn't receive any objection or comments to, to, and I was, how shall I say? I didn't have any objection to present the package as is. The, we, we also had the possibility to submit a, a large freestanding sign for the, at the entrance, but because of the location of the buildings, and I didn't think it's necessary to put one. The only monument sign is the lower profile which identifies the entrance of the, of the establishment. You may notice that the illumination is proposed only for the large signs, so that it's visible from the highway to identify the location of the building. The rest of the signage is non-illuminated. In a nutshell, that's all it is, so.
Are those signs out there now?
No, I wouldn't do that.
I thought, I thought I've seen signs.
You've seen a trailer that has signs, some of which, some of the letters on that trailer are smaller than these, these letters here.
I don't think so. That's a 40-foot sign. I, I didn't mention that because it's, it's not part of this project, but it's a 40-foot trailer, and that, that's a humongous sign. That's probably twice the size of the storage, if, for your, if.
The height of it?
Yeah. It's a semi-trailer that's parked on the side.
Right.
You calculated the letter heights, didn't you, based on seeing them from the freeway or seeing them from different locations?
For, for our project, yes. Yes. For visibility and simplicity, I turned the word self just as a, as a design object that sort of distinguishes it from the rest of the storage areas. I assumed there will be another, which is the RV storage next, and so that says RV, and I put the word self just to identify it as a different entity.
Just to make a full acknowledgement, the price of the sign that Stefan is now working on for me probably has tripled. He's doing a sign for me, so I just want to let you know, I, I do do business with.
You never know.
I can only pray, Stefan, thank you. I, I just wanted to make that public, that he is doing some work for me.
In my prior life, I put together a nationwide insurance program for self-storage and mini storage facilities, so I got a chance and an opportunity to get to know a lot of owners. And on the whole, signage wasn't how they got their business. They got it through other methods. Now, it's been a few years, it may have changed, but at that time, that wasn't how they generated their business. That's just more information, I'm not asking for.
Okay, sure. And I, I just want to stress the point that I did research this with my possibilities, what's the, the maximum package we can propose, and that was from my client's side, and like I said, I, I didn't come out of the blue with this, so.
Is the owner of this, did he give you any directions or?
He even wanted more than that. I thought, you know. I talked him out of the freestanding sign, because you could get the freestanding sign probably just as big as the, the one for the Empire Building, which is smaller than this project, and it has three illuminated signs, you know, so I, I proposed a package that's effective and functional, that's all.
And, but he, he wanted this much or more? I mean, he, if you went back to him and asked for reduced sizes or elimination? I mean, if you went back to him and asked for reduced sizes or eliminating a couple of them, would he just go along with it or?
I can't speak for him really, but we thought this was the most effective way to attract, to show direction and where it goes.
Any other questions for Stefan here?
I think for some clarification maybe. So if they placed a sign on this wall, which in regards to visibility from the highway, probably it would be right here. It wouldn't be as visible from the highway, and that's why they're proposing it from this way to get the traffic that's going this way on the highway. There'd be a lot more square footage, but because of the wall, so we measured from the wall the signs going on, I think that's where some of the confusion came from, was that he was thinking, he was looking at the frontage of this and calculating the square footage for that. If the wall, if the signs were going on one of those walls, we would use that calculation, but since the sign's going on this wall, we had to use the square footage of that sign, of that wall.
Could you go back to that photo shot again?
Sure.
Mel, can I borrow your laser? So you're saying if they put the sign on which wall?
This wall right here.
If they put it on this wall, they would have more allowance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And these are lit signs?
Pardon me?
These are lit signs?
Only that one, as I pointed out. The other, the other ones are not. But this is just for better identification at night, so.
This is for highway visibility for this sign. That was the goal of this sign, was for highway visibility.
This is one more question for you.
I think I have a kind of concern about the way signs are determined generally. It seems to be the city's philosophy, if you've got a large wall, you can have the hugest sign you can fit on that wall. And I think there are a lot of considerations beyond that as far as the aesthetics of an attractive industrial park that make people want to go there. So, am I misstating that?
So.
Yeah, I'm accurate. That if you have a big wall, you can put a sign up that's oversized for the distance you want it to be read, and that's kind of garish for the whole area. I think we have a basic problem reviewing signs to even consider trying to put it on another wall that would allow an even bigger sign when the one now is so oversized and garish, to be very frank.
Again, we're supposed to follow, we're supposed to follow codes, not, not be ARC aesthetics people.
I think following codes, as far as writing codes, I used to write zoning codes. The code doesn't say if you, if it says you're allowed to have a sign of X square feet, that you're guaranteed that square feet. I think the reason for applying a zoning commission is to review these things, because the maximum allowed doesn't mean you're guaranteed that, does it? Or does it? Maybe I'm misreading your.
What, they come in for an individual sign permit?
Yes.
They ask it's.
Yeah, so if they come in with a sign permit, and they meet the signage allowances per that code, it's allowed by right. It doesn't come before this body. The only time it comes before this body is if they're asking for more signage than what's allowed by the code.
Trying to get a kind of a mental straw poll here on what we want to do. Did anybody want to make a motion here? Or yea or nay?
For the sake of getting a position, I'll make a motion. Takes four to approve. Less than four, it's not approved. I move to recommend approval of SIG 19-005, a comprehensive sign plan for the Prescott Self-Storage Facility.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. I'm in favor. That's three. All opposed? That's three. We have no recommendation going to council then.
Ms. Chairman, you can have an alternative motion. You can have an alternative motion, so if another commissioner wants to make another motion.
Okay.
I would move that the proposed plan be approved with one change, that sign B, as in "boy," be reduced in height from seven feet, I believe it is, to four feet.
Second? Would you want to second?
I'll second that.
You'll second that? Okay, any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes five to one. You did it to us again. And what's your main objection, so we can.
My main objection in this particular case is the massive size of the sign being lit to the freeway in anticipation that the sign is going to bring in business. Signs don't bring in business. I just think there's too much. It was four times the ask, that we had fifty-four feet allowed of sign, and it's two hundred and nineteen feet that the request was for. That's my objection.
With Mel's proposal, what size is it now?
What size?
You just made a recommendation, reduce it from seven to five, four feet, right?
Twenty by four, twenty by four feet, so that'd be eighty square feet.
Instead of, instead of, it's sixty feet less.
Yes.
Well, it's a hundred and sixty square feet compared to fifty-four square feet, yes.
Well, compared to fifteen. Fifteen is the allowable.
That's my basis.
For that sign.
But all of them, in total, were, in total, the properties allowed, those three signs should be fifty-four square feet, and the ask was for two hundred and nineteen, and now you're dropping it down to two hundred and sixty-nine or something.
With Mel's proposal, how, with Mel's proposal, how does that compare to the Empire sign?
This one would be, you say twenty feet long, so.
Yeah, that's twenty feet long.
Twenty times four would be eighty square feet, as the code allows fifteen square feet, so it's still over three times what the code allows.
And I'm a, I'm a guy that just doesn't like big signs. I don't think we need them.
Excuse me.
The general community doesn't like them either.
In comparison to, to the Empire sign, if you can slide it a little bit so both buildings are visible. See, that's a much smaller building, and probably I would assume that the Empire sign is eighteen to twenty feet wide as well, and that's a much smaller building.
And it's closer to the highway.
Yeah, it's closer to the highway. And I want to stress that the purpose of that sign there is just to identify it as a directional point. It's not to generate business, because if people already know they're looking for a storage place, and if they're given directions. So this gives them a very easy orientation where to go. That's the sole purpose for it.
Thank you.
Hey, Matt, the city attorney, did you have some comments on this?
No, you have a motion, it was passed. We have to move on now.
Yes, sir. Okay. Item number four is a pre-proposed rezoning of Whispering Rock subdivision, I believe. When was it that we approved that final site layout? That's been a year or so.
It has, sir.
So the property came before you prior to its annexation for consideration of the annexation as well as consideration of its eventual zoning. And I'll start with a zoning map for that discussion. Specifically, at the time, the applicant knew that it would be a medically, medical-related development for the property. Most medical uses are permitted by the current BG zoning, which is the same or similar to zoning across the street. This is the Emory Riddle campus over here. As a result of efforts that occurred after that annexation and after the initial rezoning to Business General, one potential user of the site in this vicinity is possibly a hospital use, and the hospital use could require heights above the fifty feet that's permitted outright by this zoning. There are follow-on potential uses beyond a hospital, which would certainly be an anchor use on the site, that would bring in other medically related uses that may also require heights above the fifty feet. At this time, we don't have a specific request for a height exception, or it's called a special use permit in our processes, for the hospital, but we have indication that they will probably want to ask for that. Special use permits, SUPs as we call them, come to you for review and recommendation, and ultimately go to the city council for an approval. Similar to the comp sign plan you just talked about, the next step for that comp plan is city council for action. The current property owner, Prescott Whispering Rock LLC, intends to focus the development on medical uses and would like to rezone it to Business Regional, which is the zoning here across the street. Again, it's contiguous, and one of the concerns we would have with any rezonings are that the rezoning is contiguous to something else that has the similar zoning or the same zoning, for the purpose of allowing the medical uses and for the purposes of allowing a medical user to request, in the future, a height exception. None are requested at this point in time. The change in zoning would allow them to do so in the future. It still requires a review by you as the planning commission, and it requires approval by the city council before such a height exemption could be, excuse me, exemption could be approved. So those are sort of foundational types of purposes to the rezoning. Rezoning it to the Business Regional certainly is not out of the ordinary for zoning that occurs in this type of situation for commercial uses. Many of our larger commercial uses are zoned Business Regional. It allows a slightly wider variety of uses, and again, it allows the opportunity to request, in the future, a special use permit to allow height exceptions. Now, those special use permit, height exceptions are somewhat rare. We've only had a few that I know of in all the time I've been here, probably four that were reviewed and approved by council over that full-time period. So that's something that doesn't happen very often, but we certainly anticipate that's a possibility. So as we showed you in the information we provided, and as you recall from the discussion of the original annexation, one of the concerns with any development of the site was to provide safe access out onto Willough Creek Road, and they are acquiring or have acquired property to allow for a street alignment here, basically a slightly offset ninety-degree interchange that would be a signalized intersection. That would provide safe access into and out of the property. Signals tend to reduce the number of accidents over the current situation. Right now, if any of you have tried getting in and out of that property, there, it's a little scary if you're crossing trying to go southbound.
I did that yesterday, and it was scary.
It's a little scary. That would allow easy access, and again, it would allow a focus for a hospital location roughly here. This is the location that, that the hospital has talked to us about. We also gave you a conceptual site drawing that was provided to us by the hospital, potential hospital user of the site, that just was to give you an idea of a layout. Substantial review is still necessary for any formal submittal, and we would need far more information on the design and height of the hospital buildings before a special use permit were to be brought forward to you for review and ultimately to city council for decision. So at this stage, it's sort of changing the foundation scope by changing the zoning to allow these future users to ask for the height. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We do have a property owner here who can perhaps speak to it, but I suspect at this stage, it's mostly going to be technical questions on zoning.
Are we rezoning all the property or just this particular site here for this, this use?
The request by the property owner is to rezone all of the Whispering Rock development that was annexed in, and if you recall, you've also seen subdivision plats for that property that create a street layout and create some large parcels where a development could occur.
Individual residents up to a certain number and.
So all of the.
Same uses would be allowed under.
Yes, all of the same uses. The Business Regional zoning allows a few other uses, but those additional uses beyond the Business General uses are not medical-related uses and are unlikely to occur on the campus. Business Regional will allow a car dealership, for instance, and Business General does not.
Yeah, George, thank you. I looked back at the plan we saw back in May, I guess it was, of last year, and the property description is different. The assessed parcel numbers, only two of the parcels are the same. Is this plan here, which was, we saw a year ago, there are two different areas, or they're slightly different, or one's smaller than the other? That's not.
Most, most of the changes are a result of acquisition of properties that are associated with this development. Let me zoom in just slightly, and I'll point out those changes. So after your.
This shape here, it's about the same as this.
It's the same area, the shape slightly different due to property acquisitions that have occurred subsequent to the annexation. So there's a parcel property here.
They were talking about buying part of the church parking lot, right?
And that has occurred, and those are the additional APNs, the parcel numbers that you see in the application.
So the uses that were listed on last year's plan, there's hotel and restaurants and that sort of thing, they would be within the same area, but the whole area would be medical uses now.
It's, it's a medical focus. There's still consideration of those other uses, but they would be ancillary to the primary medical focus of the site. So there still could be a hotel, there still could be other types of uses on the site that may have some retail component to them, fast food or a restaurant-type use, but the primary use would be something either directly related to a hospital setting or medical office-type setting.
As I recall, I think the commission made a positive recommendation for this.
That is correct.
I don't think there was any dissent, and it looked like a really nice project, and I don't think the use is a problem. And I understand that today we're not being asked to comment on the conceptual site plan you have there, and we have a tendency, when we see a nice site plan like that, that's well-drafted, is you want to comment on it, but it's a waste of time because the layout could, they might move the hospital on this side of the property and all that sort of thing.
Yes. And it's likely to change just from a staff perspective, requirements for parking lot layout, landscaping requirements as part of that parking lot layout, not shown on the conceptual drawing. So the plan will change. Any comments you have specifically about that site plan are wasted at this point. You'll see a better site plan later if, if an SUP is requested.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is the developer here, the owner, who would like to tell us what's going on with this project, and in terms of timing and whether there's, you know, something really getting proposed here or?
Yes, good morning, Wajad Iskari. We've been here for a couple of years now. I appreciate your time. So our prime, primary focus is to have a beautiful hospital for not only Quad City, but even northern Arizona people, they don't need to drive to Phoenix to get medical care. There was a study that there were about fifty to sixty percent of northern Arizona people drive to Phoenix, get medical care, to Mayo Clinic, San Joe, Good Sam, a lot of doctors from town taking their patients to Phoenix. And then we were fortunate to be, and blessed to be partnered with Banner Health, their representative is here. And then initially, they were going to build a hundred-unit-bed hospital, then they changed their plan to a hundred fifty-six units. I assume it's because of the huge need of medical facilities. We don't have cancer center, we don't, the weight of cancer center, wait time is huge here, and so on, multiple other medical facilities. So one of the reasons that I saw that it would be a great idea to go to Business Regional so we can have room to do those. so we can have room to do those certain medical facilities, plus Alzheimer. We have such a huge memory issue, memory care with a lot of assisted living in town, there, there's a huge need, and then these people often, we have to look and send them to different, to patient, to other places, to Phoenix, psych issues. We always see a problem, ER guys calling me, what are we doing, what do we do with these patients? So, and then, also, there is a huge shortage of variety of physician in town. High-end robotic surgery, we were short of, cancer center, we're short of, a lot of people are dying right and left, don't get on time to physician, and cancer is a killer. And then Banner Health has been gracious and been cooperative with us, and to help us to grow a bigger hospital for a variety of reasons, and certainly, business and economic growth for our community, and also, medical office spaces, there is shortage for physicians, and then when Banner come in, then there is a need for medical office spaces. We're still focusing on our promise that we give to Amber Riddle, with Ms. Frank Ayers, who, who wrote a strong letter to support us, that there is a need for students to get a job over there, for food businesses and food court. Also, the resort, we would not block any of the view of those beautiful mountain, you know, of those, that twenty-three acres of granite, the dells that I give to the city. This going higher level, or from Business General to Business Regional, would not affect those view of those beautiful mountains that I am blessed to go do hiking, and I give it to the public. So, I wish you and your family and new generation would go and have a beautiful hiking place. That's from my standpoint. And then, if you have any other question from Banner Health representative...
Regarding the trauma center rating, now, now there's trauma centers in Flagstaff that are different than our hospital here, I believe. Would this be a different level of trauma? I see you have a helipad on here.
I, they, they do have a, they do request for a helipad? I don't think so. At this point, they, as my understanding, they were planning to do have any trauma center, maybe in future, as the community is growing, and maybe not just for patients that they need to be on a higher level of care. You know, it's funny, when I was doing my residency, we get a call at three AM, patient coming from Yavapai. All the residents, we were all scared, because people were coming from Yavapai, were so sick, with multiple medical problems, near death. We used to, excuse my language, we used to curse, where the hell is Yavapai? And then I end up here. Here, I know where Yavapai, Yavapai is. So, those people were really, really tough. Multiple medical problem, kidney problem, sepsis, multi-organ failure. So, the helicopter pad, I think that they needed, is just for those sick people, where they could have a lot of doctors together to save those lives.
So, you're saying that compared to our medical facilities now, that helicopter people out of here, that helicopter pad would be bringing people in?
I think not only from Wickenburg, Flagstaff, they do have a trauma center, maybe Verde Valley, or, or Kingman, yes. If there are people are sick, so they can go and get the patients in, yes.
Questions for Dr. Iskari? Yes, Mel?
Is it appropriate to make a motion, or is there still some comments from the commission?
Well, we'll want to open it up for public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Okay, thank, thank you, doctor.
Thank you for your support. I appreciate you guys, all this.
Okay, are there members of the public that would like to comment or speak on this? See, can't even get our old mayor up here.
Call him an old mayor. Former mayor.
This experienced, young kid.
Experienced mayor, that's right.
I didn't think you'd ever get this far. My feet went to sleep. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you for the opportunity to be on this side, and listen to how government really works. This is truly a democracy.
Do you want to sign?
Beg pardon?
Want to put a sign up somewhere, we'll, we can...
No, no, it's, I know most of you.
Help you when you grow up.
Again, thanks for the opportunity. This is not a new project, gentlemen. Dr. Iskari and I have known each other for about ten years, and we've been talking while I, all of my six years in city hall. We had conversations on a regular basis of, we're, we're a retirement community, we're, we're getting older, and we require more medical facilities, and I can vouch for that now. Couldn't for many years. So, this is a, a proper project that fits our community, but it also fits this particular location. If, and only you would know, the growth, the direction it's going. And so, this fits. This has been a, a very difficult project, because it took so many pieces to make it come together, and I know the doctors had a lot of sleepless nights, I've had a few. But my goal during my six years was to move this direction, and it took more than six years. But we're at that point now, and, and this rezoning, it's a simplification thing, to not have to come back every time. And big companies that have, that are looking at Prescott, they expect us to have things simple for them, so that they don't have to go through the process here, much like they do in the valley and other places. So, my thanks to you for simplifying it, bringing it to this point, and I think this is just the finishing touch to put this thing to bed, and we can move forward. Thanks very much.
Could we get the representative from Banner, from Banner up here, just introduce yourself, and make any comments that you'd like to make?
Good morning, sir. I'm Paul Clum, twenty-five twenty, South Balla Drive, Tempe, Arizona, and I work with Banner on the development side of the medical facilities across the system. You probably are all aware Banner Health is a nonprofit medical, this, medical, I guess you'd have to call it corporation today, that is, in more than just acute care hospitals. Originally, it started out as acute care operational, hospital operations, but through, through the time, we've all seen how the healthcare industry is targeting and attempting to keep people out of acute care medical facilities, although they are still needed, we're an aging population. But one of the aspects and unique things, Banner operates facilities, twenty-eight acute care facilities in seven western states, and those facilities range in all, all levels of acuity, some are in rural, smaller communities, that were in Fairbanks, Alaska, for example, but they range in all levels of acuity. And Banner has developed certain centers of excellence of acuity through the years, and what we're developing now are facilities to get closer to the patient, the local patients in a community, and they don't all need a high-level, what used to be called Banner Good Sam, which is now Banner University Medical Center Phoenix, which is part of the Banner University Medical Center Tucson. But to create these centers of excellence, where you have the highest level of acuity, and then you have community-based hospitals, this is one of, one of many of our community-based hospitals, and what, we were talking about the HEALA pad here just a minute ago, just to kind of clarify that. We, and to get a licensed hospital, you have to be able to transport people out with either heli, you know, some form of air transport to move them. Fundamentally, it's not inbound. This hospital would not be a trauma center. A trauma center is a, an extremely expensive facility to operate because of the high level of specialties. But fundamentally, we have a patient that would come into this facility, something occurs, and they need to get to a higher level of acuity. That's where the fundamental transport out is with the aircraft. So, that's fundamentally how that works. The issue on the height requirement, why that is so critical to us, is we have to stack vertically for a number of reasons, but it is just the logistics, operationally, piece of the hospital. If you took it and spread out a four-story bed tower horizontally, you can imagine the distance and the travel. So, the going vertically brings it together, it allows a more efficient operational use. And unfortunately, our, our configuration for this kind of facility, four-story, requires something above the forty, above the fifty feet. So, we really appreciate you, for this site to be viable for us, it has to have that ability to gain some additional height. We have components that actually, it's just, when you're looking at that sketch-up there, it's that piece right there that is the bed tower, that's the only vertical. Everything else in the diagnostic and treatment is a two-story facility, and then the health center, thirty thousand square foot proposed health center, health clinic would be a single-story facility. So, that's, we appreciate you really taking the consideration to provide an opportunity in a way for us to be able to make this property viable for development. If you have any questions?
Any, any questions?
Excuse me, I would like to make one more comment.
Okay, please step up to the microphone, so it's on recording.
Also, if you all remember, in the beginning, when we started the Friends of Prescott Airport Project, look, now we got a beautiful airport. How many meetings we have at my house? Ken remember, Marty remember, everybody remember? And now, we're having such a beautiful airport, an expansion of airport, this would be a destination of medicine. So, what else Prescott needs? This is state-of-art, a lot of economic growth for the Prescottonians, and we should be proud of this, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other public comment? Sherry, do you have anything? We're ready for a motion.
I'd like to make that motion.
Did you want to talk first?
I was just going to make a motion.
Okay.
Doesn't matter, you can make it if you want.
Despite the fact that it's seventy-one foot tall, potentially, which I'd like to see lower, but if you can't lower it, you can't lower it, I do make the motion to move, to recommend approval of P L N nineteen dash zero one eight, the rezoning of Whispering Rock subdivision from Business General to Business Regional.
Can I second it?
Second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Could we hear from the development director in terms of any other announcements, and we wanted to see your costume in full bloom?
Or Captain America, whoever.
Good morning, commissioners. The chair's intent that this moment be recorded for posterity. I don't have anything else for the good of the order, however, there may be issues or considerations for the good of the Marvel Universe that I should attend to now. Happy Halloween, everybody.
What time is your trek, trekker convention? Your, your Star Trek convention?
This is Captain America speaking.
Careful, man. She could zap you.
Anything else, George? Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.